Konsarman, ikaw mag adopt sa minutes. Ikaw mag adopt sa minutes sa 3. Present magkasatanan. Minutes. The second session will start in 3 minutes. As consul. Kindly settle down. The last session for the 7th City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Dodo Miñones, followed by the national anthem, provincial hymn, and city hymn.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you so much for your goodness. Thank you for the favor and the blessings. Today is the last day of the session of the 7th City Council of the City of Mati. We would like to express our thanks and worship and give you honor above all. We ask you to bless us today as we continue to seek your wisdom, guidance, and courage. We honor you. All the glory, precious is yours. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
O kogeshan ang inamahal, sang subangan ang daba. Batwa ka na madayaw, ya na guyun yang udaw, malipayon kay balangga ka ng Diyos. Mata bayang kalupan mo, yang tanu mapungahol. Dagat ng mga suba, madaligay ang hisna, kabuhian ka wilihan ang kanan. Umahan na daba oriental, langit mo mapawahi. Yangka butayan, yangka patagan, maya manay magandahai. Mas dihain pa kami kumakto, kami muuli anikan mo. Garbu namin alaba wenyo, yang pagsirbi sang kadyawan mo. Ubalangga syurag manmaki, yaman mo di makati. Sang kadayan, sang kapatagan, sang kada kada ang kawayayun. Magkanap yam, majeritay, kayang paliput magandahai. Sang kadyawan, yang sang mukha, ina'yanyarimahan. Dagamati mati na baro, dagamati mati na daro, dagamati mati na buru, yang dagamati mati na. Dagamati mati na daro, dagamati mati na maro, dagamati mati na buru, sang diyos na ba magkadagahu. Dagamati madayaw, dagamati kami.
Kindly be seated. Mr. Secretary proceed with the roll call.
Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, absent excuse. Honorable Delphine Miñones. Honorable Tara Maria Rabat Gaita. Honorable Sina Princess Campos, absent excuse. Honorable Edmondopang Junior. Honorable Abilino Capinha Junior. Honorable Armand Valera. Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara. Honorable Jerome Dayang Hirang. Honorable Rojelio Pabio. Honorable Daniel Makaobos. Honlib. Honorable Tomas Cebilleno. Honorable Lorenzolyn Girabat.
Present. Call for Mr. Chair. Thank you. Please proceed to the next item.
Reading and consideration of previous minutes of the second special session dated June 13, 2025. 23rd regular session dated June 17, 2025. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. If there are no corrections with our previous 3 minutes, Honorable Valera is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to each and everyone. May I now move for the adoption of 3 previous minutes dated June 13, 2025, June 17, and June 23. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Valera for the adoption of our 3 previous minutes dated June 13, 17, and 23 respectively. Correction, address O B Nato, June 23, 2025. Noted, Mr. Chair. Thank you. If there are no other corrections, if there are no objections, does anyone second his motion? Seconded by all the members, the previous minutes are hereby adopted. Please proceed to the next item.
4 question hour, no guests invited. Privilege hour.
Thank you. Privilege hours upon us. Any reports, observations by the members, Honorable Pabio followed by the Honorable Dayang Hirang.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Happy graduation to Honorable Armand Tipasi Valera.
Anong si Konsarman lang?
And also Consell Delphin Dodo Miñones, Kobe Capinha, and Sammy Rodriguez.
Thank you. Happy graduation, Kons.
Honorable Presiding Officer, we have a communication 174 series of 2025. We have 7 City Health Board Resolution Series of 2025. I would like to ask permission from my colleague of 7th City Council to be tackled during an assigned business suspended house rules.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Pabio that Communication 174 composed of 7 City Health Board Resolutions be tackled under an assigned business under suspended house rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Probably noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Dayang Hirang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. May I atautisyo? Kahila ko nga, Konsarman. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the members of the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization, this presentation would like to request to include in our Order of Business Committee Report Number 18. This is regarding the application for preliminary subdivision development plan of Shudat de Canama Residential Project and the corresponding resolution, Mr. Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Dayang Hirang that Committee Report Number 18 regarding Shudat de Canama and the corresponding resolution be included in our Order of Business. I think this was included 3 sessions ago in our Order of Business. But to be tackled only now. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Probably noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any more requests under privilege hour? If there are none, please proceed to the next item.
This time, Mr. Chair, we will hear the valedictory speeches of our outgoing city councilors.
Please proceed.
Maayong hapon, Vice Mayor Enzo Rabat. Members of Isangpo ng Panglongso. Friends, family, beloved families, valued guests, and amazing SP staff, thank you for joining us today. This afternoon, we celebrate a group of incredible individuals who had given their time, energy, and heart to the Isangpo ng Panglongso City Government of Mati. These outstanding officials have been more than just leaders. They've been mentors, movers, and true champions of public service. Their work has made a lasting impact on our city and on the lives of many. So today, with lots of gratitude and a little bit of fanfare, we honor the dedication and the legacy they leave behind. First, to deliver his valedictory speech, Mr. Chair, one of our honorees has spent 9 meaningful years at the Isangpo ng Panglongso serving 3 terms from 2016 to 2025. As Chair of Key Committees on Energy and Water Utilities and Agrarian Reform, Cooperatives, and Livelihood, he championed sustainable services and livelihood opportunities for our communities. But beyond policy, he is known for his charisma and that signature smile that lit up every session. A leader with heart, rhythm, and soul. Hituli is ang tipasi ng bayan. Niwang mantan aon pero apti kung palihukon. Sa iyang kabalak nun, ikaw iyang pakataon. Apan sa iyang pagpanerbisyo, walay na sayang nga sinsilyo. Let's give it up for the ever-passionate Honorable Armand Tipasi Valera.
Thank you. Mubok running ako ang Kwanji gorovais no. I don't have a copy of my valedictory speech. Wala ko ya copy no. Unang-unah, good afternoon, Vice Enzo. Good afternoon, Honorable Jovi Mabini. Kay Ma'am Lungyapo na tong istenographer. Sa tanan akong mga kawan, friends, and media, good afternoon. This is my last day attending a regular month decision, but don't worry. I will leave temporarily, equivalent to 3 years, and after that, I shall return. Bitaw jokra. Unang-unah, pasalamat kinakot ako sa ginoonoh, bisaya ako tanan. Then, wala kiko mag-expect. 2016, nae mo kung Consial nya panahon pasalamatan po ako si former Mayor Carlo Rabat. Dito kiko nagsugod. Pag second term ako 2019, kauban ako ang newly-elected Vice Governor na tong karoon. Formerly Vice Mayor Glenn Da Rabat, ina si Mamine mo salamat. Then, pag last term, kami ka po nag-uban. Then, na-adopt na ko kay Mayor Michelle Rabat, salamat po. Og kauban po na ko ang Consell no. Na ako ilan-lain nga mga experience, hakong naagian, dili lalim no. Na kay mga kauban pero pag abot po seleksyon, dili na ni mo makauban. Na po imo mga kauban nga po dinimo ikatim pero dun na po mga panahon nga dili po dimo ikatim. Pero sa ako nadawat na ako gaya, selive, mapuna ang politika. Imo ng agwan taon, ang tanan. Oga, naagian na po na ko nga kung mahimo ka o politician subject ka sa mga kritisismo. Po di negative, po di sa positibo. Perminta mga Kwanzaa, sa radio. Dun na usahay, mayo ang imong madungog, usahay po dili. Usahay sakit, kapatiya nga to ang pamilya, madama yogapil no. Pero madawat na ni mo ang tanan. Pero ang dakon na kung pasalamat, unang-unah po, natugid sa ginoe, kaduha sa kong pamilya. Oga, sa tanan nga mga viewers karoon, sa tao, sa Mati, salamat sa inyo pagsalik. Kung wala komodagan pagkaconsial, dili ma tao ang tipasi no. Nakainom dumpagi ko, pagdagan ako, pag ingon sa usaka tao nga tugatugag dagan, mayukmok tipasi. Gidalan ako ang tipasi. Hangtun na tao nga na ingon ni anak. Pero salamat po, kay sa kadaghan po sa nanagan. Gitagaan kiko sa ginoong makahuman. Sa 3 terms na ko, nakagraduate. Oga, mauna po siguro ang panahon, ibalik na po na ko sa kong pamilya, kay Tutilio Frank Levice. First term lang ni mo, kausalan ta nag-uban, isaka termino. Never ko, nakadog manila, within 9 years. Wala ko katambong po ng mga pisil, never po ko naglabas. Sanasod. Kay ngako ang commitment, pag makadaw ko, mo servisyo. Then, salamat sa pagsalik sa katauhan, gitanan. Oga, ako ano lang siroong advice, ako apung mga kauban, mga kuan. Human naman ang eleksyon. Magusa kitantanan para mulambo ang Mati-City. Salamat po sa kong mga kauban sa panahon nga magpasako ko koordinance, na kammo mo support. Panahon nga nakahimo ko mga resolution pagpasah, ana ah usap kammo. Oga, unsapod ako mga kakulangan, inyo po pumasailoon, o sa'to mga Kwanato, natural na sa politika. Na usahay mga panahon nga mag-uban, pagkahuman, dili na po magkauban. Pero ingon ni anak ang kinabuhay, maunang vice sa inyo antanan. Tanan, god, sa tuwatanan, congratulation sa tuwatanan. Muya salamat sa katauhan sa Mati-City. Kay Mayor Michelle Rabat, Vice Mayor Enzo Rabat, kay Ma'am Glenn Da. Ingon man kay former Mayor Carlo Rabat, salamat sa ilan-tanan. Og ingon man sa kong mga kauban, salamat sa inyo antanan. O congratulation, maayong hapon.
Thank you, Consular Armand Valera. Congratulation sa imong graduation, 3-termer. Consular, salamat sa iyong pagpanerbisyo.
Thank you, Consular Valera. Our next honorary is a seasoned public servant who served alongside Consular Valera from 2016 to 2025. As a 3-term Consular, he brought calm leadership and sharp financial insight to key committees on good government, public ethics and accountabilities, finance, budget appropriation, waste and means, and transportation. His exemplary character had led him to complete 3 terms as City Consular. A very good fellow to the Isangpo members and a great lover to constituents, especially in the aspect of good governance and accountabilities. Let's give a big round of applause to Consular Abilino Kobe Capinha Junior for his remarkable service and commitment to the city.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. To the members of this august body, our guests inside this session hall, and to the people who are watching in live coverage in social media inside Mati and outside of the city. Kanatong tanan, madayaw na hapon. Actually, padulong po dari ka kanina, naabot naong takdari sa City Hall only to think na I forgot to bring my handkerchief no. Ning balik ko balay para magtala ugpanyo. Kay basindili na ko, malikayan mo tulog, ang ako ang luha sa kuang mensahe. Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, again to all, I am deeply grateful and blessed to have reached this fruitful and productive stage in my life. Completing my 3 terms in public service as City Consular this city and 3 terms as barangay kagawad of barangay central is a big thing. I would like to extend my sincerest and most profound appreciation and acknowledgement to all. Sa tanan, nga nahimong kaparte sa ako ang kinabuhay in public service. To my 5th City Council family, former Mayor Carlo Rabat, former Vice Mayor Glenn Da Rabat Gaita, and the city officials' family in my 5th City Council, thank you very much for the memories. My 6th City Council family, together with Mayor Michelle, Vice Mayor Glenn Da at the time, and to the councilors of the 6th City Council, and to the City Council, to my 7th City Council family, Mayor Michelle Rabat, Vice Mayor Enzo Rabat. Vice Mayor Enzo Rabat, Councilor Sammy, Councilor Dodo, Councilor Tara, Councilor Shina, Councilor JR, Councilor Arman Utol, Councilor Jimboi, Councilor Sander, Councilor Roger, Councilor Tomas, Cap Danny, and Cap Lolong. Sa inyo hang tanan, daghan kaayong salamat. Sa memories, sa nindot kaayong na panag-uban, the ups and downs, sa ato ang mga trials na encounter along the way sa ato ang trabaho. Na-survive na'to, natapos na'to ang ato ang term from 2022 to 2025. Again, to my seventh City Council family, thank you very much for the good working relationship. To the other branch of Executive Department, to the different heads of offices and their employees, including the job order employees, most especially to our support staff in Sangguniang Panglungsoo headed by our secretary, Honorable Juvie Mabini. To my staff since 2016 until 2025, nga walay na usab for three terms, nga nag-uban me. This is a significant years. Sa ato ang panag-uban, nga sugod sa kuang unang term, hangtud nga natapos na kuang-akuang ikatulonga term. Nagpadayon o nagpabili ang ato ang good working relationship. Thank you very much. To the heads of office again, gusto kong magpasalamat tungod kay Kabaluta. Isip, Councilor, we cannot stand alone. The experts are those heads of office, different offices. Tungod kay mauggi na ang ilahang career, ang pag-atiman sa ilahang posisyon. nga sugod pa kaniadto hangtud karoon and until such time na mag-retire sila. They are masters of their offices, nga dakuk kaayu ugtabang, nga naghatag ugdogang kahibalo sa kuang pagpanerbisyo sa local government unit of Mati. Daghan-daghan kaayong salamat. To the job order employees, nga bisan asa'ta magkita those sweet smiles, no? Bisan dili na'to mailhan ang ato ang mga tagsatagsa kapangalan, ang mga pahiyom, nga ato ang makita, ato ang ma-encounter every day. Bisan asang parte sa ato ang City Hall. Thank you, and I am going to miss those smiles from the job order employees. Again, daghan kaayong salamat. I would like also to thank the different non-government organizations whom I am affiliated to. Dili na lang na ako isa-isahon. Sa tanan, nga mga organizations nga na-appiliate ko, and I believe dakuk would kaayu ugtabang in my public service. Thank you very much. To our friends in media, sa inyo hang patas na pag-saway o pagdaig kanamo sa amo ang trabaho. Thank you very much. And continue to be vigilant. Sa tanan, nga mga kalihuikan sa ato ang local government unit of Mati. Again, sa tanan nga mga media practitioner, radio, and even in social media, thank you very much tungod kay sometimes. Kamu ang basihan nga napukaw ninyo ang amo ang ginagmay nga mga kakulangan sa amo ang trabaho. Again, daghan kaayong salamat. And after all, nagpabili ng gehapon ang ato ang maayong relasyon sa matag-usa. To the barangay officials of the twenty-six barangays of Mati from 2016 to 2025, you are our partners, including our barangay functionaries. Thank you sa malipayo na'to na pagpanerbisyo sukad pa kaniadto. Hangtud karoon, daghan-daghan kaayong salamat. Sa tanan, nga mga katauhan sa siyudad sa Mati, nga ning hatag ugsoporta, o wala ning hatag ugsoporta sa kuang tuluka terms. Daghan kaayong salamat. You are always part of my success. Sa kuang pagtapos sa kuang tuluka term, isip City Councilor sa siyudad sa Mati. And again, this is a big thing. Dakuk na butang para sa akuat. Thank you very much. Dili na nakayon ako taasun ang akong mensahe. Before I end this message, Mr. Chair, gusto lang na ko ipaabot ang ako ang pasalamat sa tanan nga wala na ko na mention ni ining mga orasa. nga nahimong kaparte sa kuang public service. nga nahimong kaparte sa kuang success. Sa pagtapos na ko sa kuang ikatulonga termino, isip City Councilor sa siyudad sa Mati. Again, thank you very much. To the newly-elected City officials of the City of Mati, who will assume office on June 30, headed by Mayor-elect Mayo Almario, Vice Mayor Enzo Rabat, and councilors. Congratulations. May your time in the office be marked by success, positive impact, and service to the people. Congratulations on your well-deserved success in the newly-concluded 2025 elections. Sa ato ang tanan, again, with humility, with sincerity, may I convey my heartfelt gratitude to all of you Matinians, supporters, people of Mati, LGU City of Mati family, my family, especially to you, oh God, my Lord, who is the provider of everything. nga siya ang nagtugot ni ining tanan in perfect time. Daghan kaayong salamat. May I also have my Thanksgiving to the two governors nga nakahatag ugsoporta in my three terms, the late Governor Cora Malanyon and to the family and Governor-elect Nelson Dayang Hirang and family. Daghan kaayong salamat sa suporta for my three terms, isip City Councilor sa siyudad sa Mati. Again, kanatung tanan, to the SP support staff nga maoy kanunay na makauban for guiding us, amo ang trabaho, to the office of the secretary, and of course, to our honorable Presiding Officer sa Seventh City Council, Vice Mayor Enzo. Daghan kaayong salamat sa imong patas na pagtratar sa tanan ato nga mga kauban, nga mga councilors sa ato ang Sangguniang Panglungsoo. Again, thank you very much. I am very grateful for what I have and for what I am today. My Thanksgiving is perpetual. Sa kanunay, bisan unsa pa man ang mahitabo sa kuang pribado na kinabuhay. Magpadayon ang akong maayong pamatasan o ang kuang maayong relasyon sa katauhan. Kanatung tanan, daghang salamat o madayaw na hapon.
Thank you so much, Councilor Kobe Kapinha. Congratulations on graduating. I know how sentimental this session is for you. Thank you for all the kind words and the work you have done during sa Sanggunian.
Thank you, Councilor Kapinha. Loudly honor one of the kuyas of the Sanggunian. He first joined the City Sanggunian in 2013 to 2016. Took a brief break and then made a strong comeback in 2019 and again in 2022. He served as Chair of the Committee on Rules and Privileges as well as the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure. Known for his elegant, fashionable style, signature charm, and warm approachability. Cons Dodo, Kuya Dodo, or Pastor Dodo, as his family called by his church, family, friends, and colleagues, is truly a gem in the Sanggunian. His passion for good governance is making him a better public servant. Gugmasa provincia, gugmasa pamilya, kusuk sa provincia. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give the floor to the man with the golden shoes of the council but shining best in policymaking, a true father figure to these colleagues, Councilor Delvin Dodo Miones.
Thank you so much, my colleague of the Seventh City Council of the City of Mati heeded by Honorable Vice Mayor Enzo Garcia Rabat, sir. Thank you for being a good friend and a good leader of this council. Of course, SP Secretary Juvie Mabini, thank you very much. I salute you for being a good friend to us here in the council. SP employee and staff, my office staff, all Matinians watching us live today, guests, to everyone, good day. Today is my last day of attending decision. As I step down from my role as City Councilor, my heart is filled with gratitude, hope, and pride. Serving this community has been more than a responsibility. It has been a profound privilege and a deeply personal journey. I want to express my deepest gratitude to the residents of the City of Mati for the trust and support you have shown me throughout this journey. Serving our city has been one of the greatest honors of my life, and I am proud of what we have accomplished together. Over the years, we faced challenges, embraced change, and made meaningful progress toward building a more inclusive, vibrant, and resilient city. From improving public services to strengthening community partnership, every step forward was made possible through collaboration with fellow council members, especially to the Seventh City Council, city staff, and most importantly, you, the citizens. Together, we have proven that progress is possible when people come together with purpose. We've turned ideas into action, challenges into opportunities, and voices into lasting change. Our shared commitment to a better, more inclusive future has reminded me every day why public service matters. While my time in office is coming to an end, my commitment to this community remains strong. I look forward to continuing to serve in new ways and to supporting the next generation of leaders. This farewell is not an ending. It is the beginning of a new chapter for me and for our city. Leadership does not only live in elected office. It lives in its person who chooses to care and to get involved and to believe in the power of community. Though my time on the council has come to an end, my belief in this city and its people is stronger than ever. Let's keep dreaming big, standing together, and lifting each other up. Before I end my message above, I would like to express my wholehearted thanks to God Almighty for the chance he gave me to serve the people of Mati. It has truly been a privilege. To my colleague of the Seventh City Council, especially to heeded by the handsome Vice Mayor, sir. Although nag-atbangta, but our friendship remains. Thank you so much for being a good friend. Thank you, everyone, for a good and healthy relationship that we have in this council. Mamis na mu ni. The joy, the happiness, ato ma-kumidya din he. Salamat nga waipiko ni ining council. Bisag si Arman pitkan perme di gehapon ba piko. Anyway, thank you so much. We nag-enjoy kitang tanan. Thank you, thank you to every employee of the City of Mati, GO, especially to the residents of Mati. God bless everyone. Before I end, nakuntang hangi on si Kobe o si Cons Arman, nga mangal tami o manamilit na kami kami kanin. Pero wak man daw gitarista, Mr. Chair. Amo nan daw irecord o niya ipadalaglag sa council. May na lang daw mahinomdoman me. Anyway, thank you so much sa inyo hang tanan with the heart full of gratitude, your City Councilor, former City Councilor, Delvin Dodo Miones. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable Dodo Miones. My mentor in legislation, Consdo, salamat sa tanan. Sa masaging ni mo, when I called you right after the election, ang importante vice, after aning tanan, mayu gehapon ang atong relasyon. Thank you so much.
This time, we'll hear a message from our Presiding Officer, Honorable Enzo Rabat.
Mayong hapon sa tanan. It feels different to speak here in the session floor, but during our last session, I asked the SP Secretary to be given a moment to speak because my first foray in public service, even though wala ako'y comparison kay first term palang na ko ini, has been great. And I thank all my colleagues in the Seventh City Council for all your hard work. But most of all, ang napansin yun na ko sa ato is our ability to communicate. Bisag, lahi-tag prinsipyo sa politika, pag-abot sa session floor, pag-sulot palang na ko diha-gikan sa akong opisina, where all smiles. And we respect each other's opinions. Let me take this time to thank each member individually to our ABC President, Kapitan Danny Makubos, and number-one City Councilor, Sammy Rodriguez, who are not with us today. I thank them for the maturity they displayed during our time of work together. Si Kapitan Danny, I've known since I was a child. And it is nice that during his twilight years in public service and during my first year in public service, nag-abot me, pag-abot sa trabaho. Si Kapitan Sammy Rodriguez, or Councilor Sammy Rodriguez, I feel very lucky to have been given a chance to work with him because he is someone with an open mind and is always objective in his decision-making sa trabaho o sa politika. To Tara, Tara who of course, I've known since she was a little girl and who has matured to be a very strong and brilliant City Councilor, Tara. Nakita na ko sa trabaho o sa'to ang panag-uban, I really saw your inner strength, yut. Dili-lalim ang imong ibuhat, Tara, and you have succeeded in every aspect. To the original kaibigan, Councilor Kobe Kapinha, who I hope to be as youthful when I reach his age. Cons Kobe, I know how much you value your work, yut. Grabe ni mo kaseryoso, gina-cherish ni mo ang every moment, and I know how sentimental you can get, no? And like you said, this is not the end. This is just goodbye for now. To Councilor Jimboi Dayang Hirang, Cons, someone I've also known since I was a teenager, Cons. Bisag, bisan dili ni mo ginasulte kanako or bisan di pa ta mag-historya kanunay, I draw inspiration in your work ethic and your personal ordeals sa imong kinabuhay. It gives me hope, no? And I know that you have dedicated your life to public service, and I hope to do so if given the chance also. To Councilor Sander Alcántara, Sans, who shows up to my residence sometimes in the morning, in the afternoon, at night, just to talk, just to talk, and who I've grown very close to this past year. Cons Sans, salamat sa imong dedication. But most of all, thank you for the friendship, imong candidness, o imong concerns sa ako, no? Thank you so much, Councilor Sander Alcántara. To Councilor Roger Pabio, who I consider my first mentor in politics. Cons Roger, salamat sa imong wisdom na gina-impart ni mo kanako kanunay. To Councilor Arman Valera, who is a family friend, a good family friend, Cons. What a... You being elected as Councilor gives hope to the other aspiring next generation of leaders. Na basta maning kamot, basta magtrabaho, basta magampanya, basta maging matinut anon sa kaugalingon. Pwede di ay manerbisyo o graduate o mahuman sa pagka-konseal sa siyudad sa Mati. Salamat, Cons. To Councilor Dodo Miones, Consdo. Thank you. During my first few days or first few weeks during sa Sanggunian, bago mag-session, kami ni Cons... bago mag session, kami ni Cons Dodo ang maghistoria diha sa akong opisina kay ginatudluan kunya sa legislation process, and I always consult him from time to time. Ingon ni Cons Dodo sa ako, pagtili ka sure sa imong buhaton vice, katong first session ako, tanaw lang sa ako, og magsignalita, and then makatuon na ka. Tinawag yun di ay, Cons Dodo. Thank you for giving me, for giving me the respect. Bisag layo atong age gap, Consdo, no? I always tell my family, the best opponent, Cons Dodo Miones. Sa katong panahon sa kampanya, every day or every night, nagsihikog hulat. Unsa kaya ang issue sa ako, unsa kaya ang iba to sa ako na negative. Wala yun, wala yun the whole time. And I thank you for the respect and the clean campaign that you run, Consdo. To Councilor Tomas Sebelino, who I have spent a short time with. Thank you, Cons Tomas, and I've heard, and I hope that you have matured and learned a lot from your experience dinhe sa Seventh City Council. I feel also the need to thank Councilor Matt Batingana, the SK Chairman of Barangay Central, who I have grown fond of during our time working here together. And of course, to Councilor J.R. Pang, bay, salamat sa tanan. Ang atong pag-amigo, wala man nagsugod sa politika. So wherever life takes us, bisan mawala na ta sa politika, hinaut na magpabilin yaapun ang atong friendship. Sama sa giingon ni mo, the last emotional talk or political discussion that we had, na one disagreement does not invalidate all the other agreements. Salamat bay, and good luck because I know that you'll be playing a crucial leadership role in the incoming Eighth City Council. To SP Secretary Juvi Mabini, Sec, salamat sa tanan, Sec. Hinaut na ang atong mayong working relationship will carry over to the Eighth City Council. To the SP Secretary staff, SP support staff, and all staff of our SB members, thank you for all the memories. Oh, I forgot, to Councilor Sena Campos, who is not here today. Thank you, yaapun, Consen, for making the Seven City Council exciting, and I will remember all our moments together. So kanin yo tanan, leading this Sanggunean has been the honor of my life so far, and I hope to do the same in the Eighth City Council. Dagang salamat, mayong hapon.
With the permission of the Chair, we will award this plaque of recognition to our honorees today's session. Republic of the Philippines, Province of the Oriental, City of Mati, Office of Sanggunean Pang Longson, plaque of recognition is hereby presented to Honorable Armand Di Valera, City Councilor, in sincere appreciation and grateful acknowledgement of the valuable nine years in government service, so magnanimously extended to the people of City of Mati, particularly his unwavering commitment and dedication in promoting greater livelihood and cooperativism, given this 24th day of June 2025, City of Mati, Province of Oriental. Signed, SP Secretary Mati, signed, City Vice Mayor Mati, Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat. Same plaque of recognition is hereby presented to Honorable Abellino B. Capinha Jr., City Councilor. And same plaque of recognition is hereby presented to Honorable Delphine B. Miones, City Councilor.
Can they settle down? Session is still in order. Please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
Reading and consideration, reading and referral proposed measures or communications. No proposed ordinance for first reading. Proposed resolution, we have one, authored by Honorable Sandra Alcántara. Resolution accepting Daton Estor Arbezente as indigenous peoples mandatory representative IP Mar, the City Council of City of Mati, representing di kagan, kelagan ICCs and IPS, referred to the Committee on Cultural Communities, for communications messages. Communication number 173, since 2025, letter from Pung barangay Francisco G. Bardón of barangay Mamali, City of Mati, addressed to the Sanggunean Pang Longson to Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat, City Vice Mayor, regarding various barangay ordinances. Ordinance number 01, since 2025, ordinance number 02, since 2025, and ordinance number 03, since 2025, barangay Mamali, referred to Honorable Sena Princess Campos, Chairman of Committee on Oversight, Orders, and Legal Matters. Communication number 174, since 2025, letter from Honorable Bishop Rabat, City Mayor, addressed to the Honorable Members of Sanggunean Pang Longson regarding various resolutions of the City Health Board for adoption and approval of the Honorable Body, composed of seven resolutions as manifest, referred to the Honorable Pabio, Committee Chairman on Health, and as manifested by the Honorable Pabio, this will be discussed under unassigned business suspended house rules. Communication number 175, since 2025, an urgent letter from Honorable Bishop Rabat, addressed to the Honorable Members of Sanggunean Pang Longson, requesting for passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to sign for and behalf of the City Government of Mati, the proposed maintenance agreement between Amelia Solutions and the City Government of Mati for RPTA software maintenance and online integration services, referred to the Committee Chairman on Finance. Communication number 177, since 2025, letter from Mr. Maximino Nazareno II, Secretary of Sanggunean Pang Longson, addressed to the Honorable Members of Sanggunean Pang Longson of Mati, to Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat, City Vice Mayor. This pertains to resolution number 17, dash 25, zero, dash 05, since 2025. A resolution returning to the office of the City Mayor, Honorable Bishop Rabat of Mati, Daboriental, the herein executive order number 3, since of 2025, subject matter creating the technical working group task to develop the process and mechanism for the selection of mandatory representative of indigenous peoples to the Sanggunean Pang Longson of City of Mati for whatever action deem appropriate their own to conform with the pertinent provisions of Republic Act 8371 and the NCIP and legislative order number 1, since of 2021, otherwise known as revised national guidelines for mandatory representation of indigenous peoples in local legislative councils and policymaking bodies, referred to the Committee on Cultural Communities. That's all for communications, Mr. Chair. For committee report, we have one committee report. Committee Report Number 18, by the Honorable Dayanghirang, Chairman, Committee on Housing and Land Utilization.
Honorable Dayanghirang, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. On behalf of the members of the Committee on Housing and Land Utilization, this representation would like to render Committee Report Number 18. I believe members were given copies of the said committee report. Mr. Presiding Officer, I now move for the adoption of Committee Report Number 18. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Dayanghirang for the adoption of Committee Report Number 18. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, Committee Report Number 18 is adopted.
For kangar business, nonfinished business, this is for the day for second reading, proposed resolution product of Committee Report Number 18 by the Honorable Dayanghirang.
Honorable Dayanghirang, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I now move for a passage of a resolution approving the application for preliminary subdivision development plan for the Sidiad Di Kanama Residential Project located at barangay, prok maribhok barangay de Hikand, the city. I so move, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Dayanghirang for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, this motion is carried. Please proceed.
For unassigned business, subject to suspension of house rules, the Honorable Pabio has proposed legislation, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In order to address the request of my handsome colleague, Councilor Pabio, I move for the suspension of the House rules. At the same time, the conversion of this august body into a committee as a whole, I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the suspension of house rules. At the same time, the conversion of this body into committee as a whole, seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, house rules are suspended. We are converted into committee as a whole. Honorable Pabio is recognized. You may lump sum the discussions for the seven resolutions.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. From the communication 174, we have a seven proposed resolution, open for discussion.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions. If there are none, please proceed.
I move for the adoption as a committee as a whole recommendation. I do so move on seven proposed resolution prompts Committee on Health and Sanitation.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said seven resolutions. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all. Since there are no objections, these motions are carried.
Honorable Presiding Officer?
Yes.
I would like to manipulate that this for the approval of the resolution on the next regular session. What?
The resolution should be included in the order of business for the next session. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this august body back to plenary at the same time the lifting of the suspended house rules.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the lifting of suspended house rules as well as the conversion of this body back into plenary. Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, we are now back into plenary and the suspended house rules are lifted. Please proceed with the next item.
No proposed ordinance for third reading. No proposed resolution for third reading. Announcement, other matters?
Thank you. Are there any announcements, other matters by the members? Honorable Pabio.
Honorable Presiding Officer, it can allow that the graduate member of the City Council, Honorable Sammy Rodriguez, Honorable Kobe Capinha, Honorable Delphine Miones, and also Honorable Armand Di Pasig Valera, and myself, I offer to give a token to them, from a small, simple token, to the four graduates, from my heart.
What kind of token?
Thank you, Kaya, thank you.
Thank you for the kind gesture, Honorable Pabio. The Honorable Dayanghirang, Honorable Alcántara, Honorable Gaeta, Honorable Pang, Honorable Sebelino will take note when you finish your term sa next Eighth City Council. Thank you. Honorable Dayanghirang.
Mr. Presiding Officer, ang akoaon niya na lang pag human kay wala pa na ako nabahin magod para sa ina.
Thank you, Honorable Dayanghirang. Please record that, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
If there are no other announcements, please proceed to the next item.
Adjournment followed by closing prayer by Honorable Miones.
Honorable Miones is recognized.
Salamat kayo on behalf sa mga kauban nga graduates. We'd like to express our thanks to Councilor Roger Pabio. Thank you so much, Cons. Anyway, the amount does not matter. What matters is what is in the heart. Okay, thank you so... Thank you. I move for the adjournment of the last session of the Seven City Council. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the adjournment of the last session of the Seven City Council, seconded by all the members. Session adjourned. Congrats sa'tong tanan.
May I request everybody to please rise. Heavenly Father, we are so much thankful for your goodness. We are happy, we are blessed. Enjoy kami, pasalamat kami sa usa kabuo matinut-anon nga council. For my nine years in this council, we are so, I'm so blessed kauban sa city councilors. Pasalamat kami nga giu sa minimo, even we have different idea suggestions, but thank you. Together, imo kami gibuo in one accord. So thank you for being with us. It is my prayer that the next City Council, Eighth City Council of the City of Mati, we are praying for your blessings. Let the divine mercy and divine guidance of the Almighty God be upon them. Thank you. Malipayon kami, nga tapuson kining, kataposang session. Og moyon kami. Thank you for being with us all the time. So bless us all together as we close this session. This is our wholehearted prayer in the name of the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Amen.